Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of September 25th, 2018 is now called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in silence mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during any special presentations portion of the meeting. Of course, tonight, though, we don't have any sadly. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district vision, to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include three items under executive services, two items under academic services, two items under business services, six items under human resources, eight items under operations, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Certainly, Madam Chair. This action calls for the removal of some items from inventory, some school buses, in compliance with the Clean Diesel EPA grant through requires that we dispose of 10 buses prior to disbursement of the $200,000 rebate to the district. These buses are not operational, must be scrapped by October 20th of 2018. So in order to expedite that process, I'm moving this to good cause.
As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. One item for public hearing and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Patrica, thank you. Please record your vote. The motion, it is approved to adopt the agenda with six to zero. Ms. Giovanni will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Fisher will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will you please rise?
Dear Lord, we seek your guidance with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are a diverse group with different opinions. I pray for unity and mutual respect of one another's ideas. Yet we wish to restore our differences and reach agreement satisfactory for all, students and families and community and staff. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do the right by all stakeholders. Thank you and your heavenly blessings. Amen.
Amen. The cadet presenting the colors for tonight's pledge of allegiance will be introduced by Staff Sergeant Robert Hunter, Army Instructor for the JROTC program at Lehigh Senior High School. Staff Sergeant Robert Hunter retired from the Army in 2011. His deployments include Operation Iraqi Freedom and Desert Shield and Desert Storm. Welcome.
Thank you. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Master Sergeant Suzette Britto of Lehigh Senior High School Lightning Regiment. Cadet Britto maintains a 4.86 GPA and serves as Lehigh Exhibition Drill Team Commander and has competed at both district and state levels. Outside of JROTC, Cadet Britto is a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Key Club, the A Student Union, and Student Government. Upon graduation, Cadet Britto plans to attend the University of Florida. Please join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Williams, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Okay. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to me before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Lavieri, our vice chair, will give you the opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of public comment period, the board vice chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers to those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. Time per speaker is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have six cards.
Okay. Is there anyone on my left who did not get the opportunity to fill out the blue card that would like to speak? Anyone on my right?
All right. Our first card is Rachel Polansky. All right. Our next card is Louis Navarro, or Navara.
Mr. Williams, I missed it. How many cards do we have?
We had a total of six, but taking away that first speaker is five.
Superintendent Atkins and board members, I'm back, just like Tiger Woods. Lou Navara, 47 years, impeccable Lee County resident and 46 years, Lee County teacher and substitute teacher. God bless the state attorney. Let's talk about salary. This is a time for collective bargaining, or as they used to call it when I was in the union, begging, or collaborative begging now, so I'm told. I would like to see everyone from the assistant superintendent to teacher to support personnel get a 13% raise like the superintendent. I call it parity. We will skip the annuity for them since we all have the FRS, and I get that as a retired person. We also need due process reinstated if you plan to keep educators and give social security to the substitute teachers. There's too much guilty till proven innocent. Look at the news. My son lost two years of social security as a sub here because you do the BenCor. It says save 7%. He then taught here four highly qualified years, asked Mr. Purdue. He now tutors for the Chinese government. They pay him a salary plus social security in American dollars so their children can learn English online from Florida to Peking, China. I still finally feel that, I don't know about this collective stuff, but I don't think the board should meet once a month at the teachers' union office. Regressive sales tax, brainchild of Sarasota School District and Jane. They're all rich up there. Manatee County passed that sales tax, it's a disaster. The money was spent, supposed to be spent for salaries and student needs at a committee picked by the board like you do. Instead, they use the money for SROs and private police force they're working on. And I read this in the Sarasota paper. I saw the YouTube video, Crocodile Tears, it's touching. You don't need the tax increase for Mirror Lake School. Use the funds that you have from PICO or think that you should have saved the money from that lawsuit and used it. You know? It's crazy. Or you got your contingency fund and you've got a reserve here according to your budget you approved a month ago or several weeks ago, 261, 155, 71, 80 million reserve. Take the money from the new LED signs, they're running at about 40,000 apiece. Use it for Mirror Lakes. J. Colen English got a sign, Calusa Middle got a sign, Tropic Isles got a sign, but I didn't see any signs at James Stevens Academy or Franklin Park.
Sir, your time is up. Our next speaker is Curtis Sheard.
I have 25 years of construction experience. I'm a licensed general contractor with over 14 years. I'm also a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Certified Quality Control Manager, OSHA-60 certified. I have a bachelor's in construction management, and I've been fortunate enough to construct projects well in excess of $100 million. Now, I ask, wouldn't you have loved to have this type of experience within the construction department here at the school district? Surely, you would have prevented the multimillion-dollar fiasco of the Bonita Springs High School with this level of experience, but this person would be more qualified to be the director of the school district's construction department. That's me. What's interesting is that I possess these credentials, and I was a member of both your construction and financial advisory boards where I thought I was providing a valuable service to the community in which I live and serve. It's unfortunate that during an open conversation between the superintendent and two subordinates, that I was ground graded to just a barbecue guy, and I was the example used by senior leadership when discussing the type of person not wanted on the advisory board. This is an insult to my profession and honestly a slap in the face with the educational credentials and my construction experiences. The superintendent found humor in her comments. It's horrible that leadership here at the district is quick to be so dismissive to its internal and external customers. It's this type of elitist attitude filled with bigotry and discrimination is why I'm here today. I ask you, are you willing to accept this type of behavior from your superintendent? Are you willing to push this under the rug and tell me that they didn't mean what they said? Or will you, the elected leaders, take control of this failed superintendent and his subordinates and turn this district around for the better? I do expect a reprimand of the superintendent for his behavior as well as the subordinates. Failure to do so will show that you're just as complicit and that you will need to be removed during the next election. And for the record, I'm not just a barbecue guy. I'm the CEO and founder of Big Boys Barbecue, an award-winning, recognized sauce manufacturer which provides the greatest sauces and rubs, the winner of Rooster and Butch A&amp;E's National Competition Last Sauce Standing where I won a million-dollar investment. My name is Curtis J. Sheard. I'm more than just a barbecue guy.
Our next speaker is Raimi Hall.
Good evening. Nice that I get to follow Mr. Sheard. I actually served on the fact committee with him, and I would say he is more than qualified. I'm appalled to know that you guys are making comments like that about citizens behind closed doors. That's very disturbing. I hope an apology will be issued to him tonight. I emailed you all a couple of weeks ago. No one responded, so it's discouraging to us, parents, community members, that you don't have time to email a parent, but you have time to have closed-door conversations about who you think is qualified for a committee. Do you guys want public input or do you not? I think that's a question you all need to ask yourselves. I hear you want like-minded individuals. I don't think change comes from like-minded individuals. I think you need to be open to outside opinions. During the briefing today, you guys had some discussion about the audit or report, however you want to phrase it. I would like to see more of you asking questions about the HR issue. Why aren't you pushing into that? What are you going to do? Why did we pay almost half a million dollars to do this if no changes are going to be made? Maintenance, HR. Lee County is not unique. Come on. Who is looking at Lee County as a model of how to do things? That's what I'd like to know. Anyway, moving on. Safety, we still have issues. Some schools got things done, not most of them. I'm still hearing from principals and teachers, your safety director still has not stepped foot on some campuses. What happened all summer? Why aren't changes being made? We have a whole team, a zone director. What are they doing? It is too much for an SOAR officer to deal with. Teachers are underpaid. My kids have teachers teaching them that are worried how they're going to pay their bills, okay? When are we going to pay teachers? I love the suggestion about them getting a 13% increase. That's what they need. That's what they deserve. The video you guys put out with the roof at San Carlos Park, I got to tell you, absolutely disgusting, disgusting. I cannot be, I don't know if you guys approved that or if the district approved that. That was not a good reflection on our district, and I heard more people tell me they were voting for the sales tax prior to seeing that video, and they will not vote for it after seeing that video because they said, what is happening with our funding in Lee County? Why are roofs falling in? I mean, that was not a good reflection on our maintenance team, our management, our leadership, especially when you got LED signs in front of every high school to the tune, I heard 28,000, another speaker said 40. Why? Why are teachers underpaid and we have $40,000 signs and we have holes in our roofs? I'm going to say, I said a year ago, if the FEMA paperwork was handled properly, I think that would have answered a lot of these maintenance problems. I don't think we did.
Ma'am, your time is up. Our next speaker is Jacqueline Perez.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Perez. I'm here this evening to speak of an important stakeholder in our community that has been treated unfairly by your staff. A couple of weeks ago, I received an email from Mr. Curtis Sheard, which described a meeting where Mr. Sheard was referred to in a derogatory manner and he was referred to other than his name. This was not an isolated incident, but reoccurring behavior from district members. Just recently in July, during another meeting, Lori Fahey was the butt of snide comments also. This type of behavior should not take place at a public school district. These advisory committee meetings meet approximately seven times a year, from one to two hours at a time. And now the requirements that are being placed on these members for expertise, high qualifications with approvals is ludicrous. If this board is relying on the expertise of individuals that meet for approximately 20 to 24 hours a year to make decisions on a $1.5 billion budget from selective biased information, that is just nonsense. I have had conversations at length with previous FAC members. One was an attorney who specialized in finance. That person stopped attending and felt that questions and recommendations that they made were ignored. It was impossible to get any public records, which prevented her in verifying information that was broad and vague to the group. These members are not here hours on end and do not have access to the accounts, contracts, receivables, and payables. The advisory community groups were created with the intent to foster a bridge between the community and the district, to encourage community participation and partnership, to keep the community involved in the actions of the board and share their input and ideas with the district. What it has created is segregation of certain individuals by your own doing. It should be called the Vote Along to Get Along Committees. There is no real committee input of ideas or questions. This is stifling of allowing members to pose questions and suggest other options other than the supposed mission of the board, but not of the district. This stifles the actual intentions of these committees. It should also be noted that the board members are there to observe, take notes, and are not there to run the meetings or make these decisions of who is qualified and has expertise in a particular area. There should be a cross-representation of all citizens in the community. This behavior is isolating certain community members, as it did with Mr. Curtis Sheard. You have the responsibility to educate and properly inform all of the facts. It has become apparent that it is a detaining factor of who is appointed and who is not. This is creating a systematic process that segregates, and it needs to change. It needs to stop. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Kathy Mayo.
Good evening. I'm here because I too was privy to some conversations that were made about your advisory boards. Over the years, I've heard from a number of citizens who have served on boards, and they've pretty much echoed the same thing. Why am I here? I've wasted all this time. I've done my homework. I've tried to share ideas, and yet I'm not appreciated. My ideas are thrown aside. If I am not agreeing with the party line, I'm just wasting my time here. And that's sad because the whole idea of an advisory group is advice. You may not want to take it, but there's some awfully well-qualified people in this community who could make a big difference if you would only listen to them actively. I have one other question, and that is, when are you going to fill the position that handles Title IX? The Title IX Coordinator was promoted or moved to another position. It's still vacant. The duties have been given to another staff member who's already, you know, up to his eyeballs and other responsibilities. This is a really key position. Some of the problems that this district has had directly relate to Title IX. I want to see this position filled. There's good people out there that could serve in that position. Thank you.
So no more card?
No more cards.
Dr. Atkins, if you could provide some information regarding the Title IX position? I don't know if you're able to address that or not.
I can check with Dr. Creel and get back to you.
All right. Thank you. And I don't know if there was anything else, anything that you would like to address at this time?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material and have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Board members, are there any agenda items that you wish to pool for discussion under the unfinished tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher?
I have none this evening.
Ms. Giovanni?
None.
Ms. Patrica? Ms. Patrica?
You.
Mr. Toyber?
Oh, ma'am.
Dr. Cuckel?
And I have none.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the ex-
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll go with Ms. Fisher. Motion carries 6-0. Included in the approval of consent items on the agenda are the resolutions proclaiming October 2018 as National Bullying Prevention Month, as well as October 1 through 15 as Disability History and Awareness Week. There are no attorney recommendations. We will proceed on to public hearing.
None at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. We will now recess the regular board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider approval to adopt Policy 1.26, Independent Sales Tax Oversight Committee. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the left section? My left, your right. On the opposite side? I will now close the, at this time, okay, we're ready to go. Excuse me, I lost my spot because no one's speaking at this time. I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of September 25th, 2018. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Recommendation is approval to adopt Policy 1.26, Independent Sales Tax Oversight Committee to conform with Section 4 of the resolution passed by the school board on February 5th, 2018, authorizing a referendum election of a one-half cent per dollar sales surtax to finance educational improvements and facilities and equipment, including technology. Section 4 of the resolution authorizes the school board to create a project oversight committee to oversee and implement the referendum's project plan. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 26, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel?
Support.
By Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Since there is none, please record your vote. Board members' comments and reports. Let's go to Ms. Fisher.
I have no comments this evening.
Ms. Giovinelli?
I have none.
Mrs. Patrica?
I think I have a question, if it's appropriate for me to ask now. I don't know if I ask you, Dr. Atkins, or I ask you, Ms. Johnson. I just went through our applications for board advisory committees, and there was no application from Mr. Sheard, so I'm wondering really what it was we were even talking about tonight. Could you just confirm for me and for the rest of the board whether an application was or was not received from him for this year?
I spoke to Ms. Ramey's trainer, and she said it was not received from Sheard.
Okay. Okay. That was-
All right. Thank you. Clarification. That kind, I was a bit, I'm still a bit confused about that. Mr. Toyber?
No comments.
Dr. Cuckel?
And I have none.
Mr. Williams, do you have any comments this eve? Oh. Ms. Fisher?
I'm sorry. I neglected, this afternoon at the briefing meeting, I talked about us sending a letter to Galasano Children's Hospital Foundation for the donations of the AEDs to all schools, but I neglected to get a consensus. Is there anyone who does not agree, or thumbs up if you do?
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
No comments or reports at this time, Madam Chair.
Dr. Atkins?
No comments this time. Thank you.
Well, the next scheduled meeting of the board will be on October 10th, 2018. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. (laugh). We'll let Ms. Giovinelli get credit for that one. It was a tie. Please record your vote.
What if we say no?
You might be here by yourself. And motion passes 6-0. This evening's meeting is adjourned.